Thanks folks for joining us this evening for our June board voting meeting. I do want to announce that prior to the meeting, we did hold an executive session for the purposes of revealing Act 44 information as well as personnel matters. This time, would you please join me up with the folks in the back?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also wanted to thank Mr. Brady for pulling in at our last meeting and sharing, getting my absence, my job. You're welcome anytime. So this evening, we're going to start out with a recognition, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Phillips, who can introduce our presenter.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I'd like to introduce Mr. Brett Mascaro, who's representing Zezwitz Music. Am I getting that correct?
Yes, sir.
Zezwitz? Great.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, thanks to Dr. Phillips, Dr. Hamburger, and members of the Exeter Township School Board, and the students nearby, and music teachers, and the community. My name is Brett Mascaro, I'm the Director of Education for Zezwitz Music, and we're a member of the National Association of Music Merchants, known as NAM. It is, they have a nonprofit foundation, and I'm here to present the award recognizing Exeter Township School District with the Best Communities for Music Designation for its outstanding commitment to music education. Now in its 20th year, the Best Communities for Music Education Designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music, music access and education to all students. Qualified for this designation, Exeter Township School District has answered detailed questions about graduation requirements, funding, music class participation, instructional time, facilities, support for the music programs, and the responses were verified with the school officials and review by the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. Now to put some perspective on this, NAM recognized 623 school districts in 41 states across the country as among the best communities for music education. There are 13,588 public school districts in the United States, so the 223 winners represented just 4.6% of the districts. In other words, this award places Exeter Township in the 95th percentile nationally. And by the way, I did a little research, Exeter has won this award several times in the past, especially the last four years straight. So this award recognizes that Exeter Township is leading the way, with learning opportunities as outlined in Every Student Succeeds Act. That legislation guides implementation in the states and replaces No Child Left Behind, which was often criticized for an overemphasis on testing while leaving behind subjects such as music. The ESSA recommends music and the arts as essential elements of well-rounded education for children. There are a number of items here relative to research, but as you can tell, we're very excited to be here to help the Exeter Township School District to celebrate. So on behalf of Zezwitz Music, we'd like to offer our congratulations to the students, the teachers, the school administration, and the school board, and the entire Exeter Township School District community.
Come on here, we're good.
Ah, sir.
Some of our music.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mascaro. On behalf of the school board, just like we say again, it's our pleasure, our honor to receive an award like this, and we take a lot of pride in our music program. Thanks. At this time, we're going to open up the floor for public comments. This is an opportunity for folks in the community, staff members, others who have an interest in sharing information with our school board, anything that might be relevant on the agenda, or any items that might be pertinent. You would have three minutes to speak. Please identify your name and your address.
My name's Jennifer Campbell. My address is 218 Harvey Avenue. I'm a Jacksonwell parent and an APT board member. I'm here, as well as some other parents, to speak tonight about the principal position at Jacksonwell. I also have an email to share after I'm done speaking from a parent that could not be here because they're on vacation. I spoke at the last meeting, and I have sent emails to the board members about my concerns. I know you have received many emails from our parents. First, I'm disappointed that the candidate being voted on tonight was not properly vetted. These are our children, and the best work was not done for them. Teachers are held at a high standard, and administrators should be held at an even higher one. We stress to our children what they should and should not post on the internet, and this is one of the things that we teach them not to post. Second, the business administration and school board members have said repeatedly that we need to address budget deficit. Mr. Gelliffe, you yourself said we are in crisis mode. Yet here's a prime example of where the school could have cost savings by reducing administration. Mr. Isselman could be moved to the principal position at Jacksonwell Elementary, while his existing principal, assistant principal duties could be accomplished without the need of another full-time administrative hire. Weren't we all just speaking about innovative, an innovative way when it comes to these spending decisions? Making that move saves us $97,000 salary in addition to the benefits by not hiring an out-of-district replacement. Jacksonwell will be losing a long-term substitute in addition to seeing increased class sizes, which affects one of my children. Does anyone know how backwards this thinking is? For those on this board that profess to care about the budget, you can talk the talk, but can you walk the walk? There is a great amount of hypocrisy with certain statements by those board members. Make the smart decision and move Ted and keep our long-term substitute. Lastly, we have a fellow township member, Ted Isselman, that is qualified and has been recommended for the job. He has been praised by past and present coworkers. He knows the district inside and out. He has been an active member of the school community for years, and he lives right here and can be at all of the school functions. Why bring someone else in that we have no idea what we're getting when we know what we will get for Mr. Isselman? I am asking you to please vote no tonight. Please don't play father leader on this decision. This is not the right decision for our children. The best decision for our children and school is Mr. Isselman as our president, as our principal. Thank you for your time. I have an email from Mr. Justin McCord, who is a Jacksonwell parent. He sent this to me last Friday afternoon. Said, "Good afternoon. My name is Justin McCord. I am currently the gifted coordinator at Phoenixville Area School District. Prior to that, however, I worked at Dan Ueboon and had the privilege of working alongside Mr. Isselman. I can say from personal experience that he is one of the most dedicated educators I have seen in my 11 years in this profession. If Jacksonwell does not hire him, it is a huge loss to our kids. Unfortunately, my family and I are leaving for vacation, so I cannot attend the meeting. Please mention me by name and my thoughts on Mr. Isselman. I will also be emailing the board as well. Thank you very much for your time to me."
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Good evening. I'm Christy D'Angelo. I reside at 211 Mayor Street. As an Exeter grad and lifelong Exeter resident, I take pride in the township, but most especially the school district. I'm proud of the education and experiences my children have received so far while in the district, one going into the junior high in eighth grade at the junior high, and my youngest going into third grade at Jacksonwell. I'm excited about what their future years at Exeter look like, and this is a direct reflection of the educators, support staff, and administrators they come in contact with on a daily basis. It is because of this that I feel the board would be doing a disservice to the district by dismissing the recommendation of the interview panel and their candidate of choice, Mr. Ted Isselman, and proceed with the vote on the appointment of Renee Moser. As a reminder, the role of an interview panel is to serve the highest good of the school district by identifying, vetting, interviewing, recommending those candidates to the board who encompass and hold not only the necessary credentials and experience, but embody the essence of community, education, and leadership. An interview panel seeks to recommend candidates that can not only meet expectations but exceed them. Of the final two candidates, Mr. Isselman is a well-known and respected professional to the teachers and administrators within our schools already, more than credentialed and with a high level of experience in all levels of education. He is a district resident with strong ties to our immediate community and an active volunteer who has already immersed himself into our schools. Mr. Isselman is being recommended by the interview panel as the first-choice candidate to serve the highest good of the district. I'm not devaluing Ms. Moser's qualifications, as I am simply asking the board and everyone here, why would we settle for less for our district, our teachers, and most importantly, what the students of Jacksonwell deserve? Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay. We're going to move on. We've got a building program report, and Mr. Campbell's here from our senior high school. Welcome, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Thanks.
Also, apologies for that. That's a lot. So really, thank you for having me. What I really want to capture is just a quick overview of the high school. We spend so much time doing what you would expect us to be doing in our classrooms. I want to just highlight a few things that extend beyond that, and I'm not attempting to capture everything, and I'm intentionally leaving out athletics, as they were presented recently. So really, we started the year with a welcome to our incoming class in 2022 and ended with a bittersweet goodbye to our graduates, the class of 2019. Our English department saw success in its reading Olympics with winning the county championships again, and that our talent continues to be published on a regular basis to keep abreast of what's going on in the school and broader community. And math leagues, we have our math competition, won third place in the county competition. And I'm also intrigued by how our teachers are trying to articulate and express some of those abstract values. I was interrupted in math class the other day because they were out gathered on the flagpole, I discovered news in trigonometry to measure some of the heights of some of the things around the campus. The flagpole's 30 feet, by the way. Social studies, we get in and out of the classroom as well as bring people in. Mrs. Ryder's class, or some of her classes went to Model Senate Day with Senator Schwenk, participated in some legislative activities there. Mr. Ziegler's regularly bringing in speakers. Here we see some Vietnam vets having a Q&amp;A session with some of our students in a variety of social studies classes. Science continues to have a lot of experiences in and outside the classroom. Walking in and seeing crime scene tape is always a little bit concerning, but when we know that the forensic class has brought in Judge Frederick, or Victor Frederick, to talk about his roles as police officer, as a district justice, as an attorney, you really start to see multiple sides of crime investigation. Our proximity to Intimum Creek has been great for our biology classes, who go down there to gather data on stream studies and track wildlife habitat. And our Science Olympiad team won first place in the county again. It's been a big year for world language and continuing a lot of the programs that we've had, such as our interdisciplinary Day of the Dead, and it was this year that we had a French exchange. Sadly, our students were some of the last to see Notre Dame before the fire in April. But we expanded the program, adding Spanish exchange this year and extending the opportunity for French students to go on longer exchanges with our sister school in France. It's always interesting to go into the PE and health classes. I'm impressed with the variety of individual cardiovascular and strength tasks they're having the kids do, but I think what's even better, some of the more cooperative activities that they have them do, which requires a lot of physical coordination as well as the communication to go through some of the activities and tasks. Our art department continues to really be a highlight at Exeter. I'm impressed with the breadth and the depth of what our students are offered. When you go to that art show and see the quantity of work that's produced, it really shows us that our kids have a lot of opportunities to practice those skills, regardless of where they come in or where they need that program. But when you also see the depth of what some of those students are able to do and how it really puts Exeter on the map in a lot of ways. We've got work that's being displayed on Panathinaum West Reading, that's part of a competitive event. We've had students come away with the works from jury shows at KU and the Goggle Works this spring. We've got work that's down at the IU that's also being reproduced at the mural in Dr. Phillips's office. We've got work down in Washington DC in Representative Hoehn's office that will be there for the next year. We had a piece that was selected as part of the national competition for the National Poetry Month poster event. So to see our kids at state and even national levels is impressive. Our performing arts, there's art again, our performing arts also is a banner year. Music, our orchestra, chorus, and band all had representatives at county, district, and state levels. I'm impressed with the ambition of our teachers, who bring people in, regular, are bringing in college professors and bringing in professional musicians to work with our students. I thought the coolest one was when the college professor asked to come work with our kids because of what she saw at one of the festivals. So she came in, brought some of her college students today to do some collaborative work together. Also need to give a shout out to Miss Combs for hosting the District 10 PMDA Regional Choral Festival. Brought in 45 schools and over 220 students for some fantastic music, but again, showcasing Exeter. Theater Department had two great shows with Lady Dracula and Sister Acton in the spring, and then I think FCS is next, I believe. Nope, sorry, BCTC. You know how strong that program is? A model around the state in a lot of ways, giving opportunities such as the House Project, which not all CTCs do, and I'm so glad to see our students participating in that and being able to work with people from around the county. And you've seen some of the students that were recognized here earlier for their state level recognitions, whether it's being president of HOZA or for winning the Governor STEM Logo Competition. We had quite a few students be recognized in the National Technical Honor Society in the fall. Our Family Consumer Science classes, you know, I don't need to tell you how well they cook, we all enjoy that, and it's my professional responsibility to go down and judge some of those events on a regular basis, so I will continue to do that. But I'm also impressed with how interdisciplinary they are in their work, which really makes those tasks that they're doing much more authentic. And the tech ed department, you've seen showcased here on a number of occasions, so I won't go into the awards, Dave Warren, TSA, and the Governor STEM Program, but I want to add that part of what gets them there are the outside speakers that they bring in to talk about some of the nuances of those fields, such as the speakers from Dickinson who came in to talk about intellectual property, and that was a joint effort by the business teachers and the tech ed department. Special Ed continues to provide real experiences for our students. Again, not to emphasize food too much, but I think that the crossroads programs, planning, preparation, and serving of the variety of things from coffee carts to salad days to the holiday meal events demonstrates the work that those teachers have done. And again, our special ed department showcased Exeter by bringing Special Olympics here and bringing the county here for that important event. Our post-secondary plans is the lens that our counselors use when they talk to kids starting freshman year. It's always about what are you going to do after high school and how are we going to prepare you for that? So whether it's outside speakers that they're bringing in to talk to the students or the parents, or taking them on tours of industry or businesses to get them to start to envision what life is like after school, those are important activities that we provide all of our kids all year. The last thing I want to emphasize are those that are really outside the classroom. Although we do spend the bulk of our time really focusing on learning, I really think that the club activities that kids do generate some of the most important memories and most important skills at high school. And what I would think is really notable about our clubs is that a lot of it emphasizes service to others. So whether it's the actual dollars that we can quantify from Minithon, that were sent off to pediatric cancer, or the number of pounds of food that were sent to drives, or number of coats that were sent out, those are really important. But I also think it's sometimes just how we sort of move the needle on how we think about things. So maybe it's not the number of pillows and blankets that we produce for homeless, but the fact that it generated an awareness that homelessness is a problem even in our local community. Special events, I'm not going to try to explain to you how important homecoming prom and dances can be at high school, and they are incredibly well-attended, and it's neat to see the kids having such a good time. And lastly, just to highlight a couple of the clubs that stood out to me, like Leo Clubs' Welcome Breakfast for the new students. So that's their chance to say to every new transfer student in the fall, "Welcome to Exeter, you're an Eagle, you're a part of us now." The Wish Week right before in December for the winter break, where that, much of that week is really geared toward how do we serve others and what do other people need? Student Forum, many of you attended, and I'm really pleased that how that voice translated into some ideas that we're able to implement in the building. I think the last is really the graduates. So before we sent them across the stage, we took them on a walk. I'd like to thank Mr. Flann and Dr. Freeze for opening up their buildings and allowing our graduates to walk down there, enjoy some memories, can reconnect with some teachers. But I think even more importantly, inspire some of these younger students toward what being a graduate is. So a great event, and I look forward to doing that in the future. And I'm fully confident that the nearly 300 students that we walked across that stage on June 6th are ready for life after high school, and will be proud to be Eagles going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I just wondered how, just looking back in your first year.
It's over already?
It is over. It marks the end of the first year. And I just kind of wondered from my own knowledge, what did you see when you came in here that really made Exeter kind of stand out in high school? What did you learn this year that really makes, let's say, Exeter High School somewhat special?
I'm still impressed at how kind the kids are, and really, they look out for each other and also the support the parents provide. There's a real emphasis and desire on the part of parents to see their students learn, and I couldn't ask for more than that.
That's a great observation. Well, thank you. I know it was a very full year, and you made it through the first one, looking forward to year two.
Thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions. I'm gonna be sorry to be a bit of a buzzkill here, Mr. Campbell. I think I'm gonna be doing that a little bit tonight. Can you talk to me a little about vaping in high school? And you know, that is a pretty significant issue, and I'm just wondering how you guys are dealing with it or how you intend to deal with it going forward? Because I've heard from students who feel as if they can't even go to the bathroom because of other students vaping.
I would agree that it's a concern. It's not just, it's not unique to Exeter. I think that every school in the county has been talking about it and is showing up, just been talking to principals, and it shows up in the national press. I wish we had firmer numbers on it. So with that, we know it's an issue. The way that it's addressed now through a code of conduct provides a punitive response. That's one of the topics that we're going to be talking about this summer, we'll do some of that. We've also started some of those conversations with our SAP team and counselors to try to generate some additional approaches that hit it from, not only a punitive response, but it is wrong, and the kids know it's wrong. And the parents, to go back to the parents, of all the calls that I've made on that, I'm impressed at how often the parents are emphatic about how their students should not be doing it too, which speaks to part of the other problems. It's an addictive issue, so we do want to figure out how we tackle that. I don't know how we're gonna, we're not gonna be able to do it entirely, but as a school, we really need parents and larger communities to step in. I think some of the laws that are being discussed about how we can restrict them to access to that is gonna be part of it, but I think we want to come up with a way that addresses the discipline side of it as well as the support side of it to the extent that we can. We've spent a lot of time walking into bathrooms as much as we can and having teachers go in. I've, I have caught some students, but I'd say largely bathrooms are more accessible than not, and I do think that the students get to know the message that it's not, that it's not acceptable in school. I don't think there's any debate about it. So we're gonna continue to be proactive in terms of getting to bathrooms and making it not despotable and making sure that kids don't have a place to do that, and also support it when we need to react to a case where a student said they caught.
If I could jump in too on that. On June 10th, when we had an in-service day at the end of the year, Alicia Lenard from the Karen Foundation was here and did a session in the morning for three hours with the school counselors, nurses, school psychologists. They did some planning around mapping out like a plan as a team of school counselors, you know, what can we do? Some of that included engaging the parents a little bit and having some sort of evening session in the fall at some point where we can bring community in and try to better educate, you know, what vaping is all about, the dangers of it, that type of thing. And then in the afternoon, kind of replicated that same session that was open for teachers to attend. Large majority of our high school teachers attended that session, and they talked a lot as kind of a collective group, kind of did some brainstorming around, you know, okay, like in the immediate, what can we do at the building level to just try to be more vigilant? So, you know, we really tried to take some time that day to engage our employees, and we're already starting to talk about what can we do to get the word out to the community, leverage some of the support that the parent foundation offers. I know other districts in Berks County have done similar things, they had parent events, that type of thing, and there has been talk under Andrew Freeze's leadership, I believe, to drive new topics.
And we do have Karen coming in early this week to talk about vaping as well.
Yes, I was just gonna say also too, Alicia's going to be here next month to give the whole SAP update, and she has been working with the high school to increase our health curriculum, to focus on the education of students on this topic, so they start understanding how detrimental it is to their health, and so we are ramping that up. I know she's worked with Tom and our health department to get more of that into our curriculum so they get more of an education about what they're actually doing. They may think it's nothing big, and it is.
One of the things that we talked about in our Act 44 discussion was the SAP program, and you can look at sort of the numbers both ways in terms of referrals to the SAP program. I mean, you want to see high numbers, but the numbers are really high, and you know, I'm just wondering how closely the high school administration is working with guidance in the SAP program, because you know, it's encouraging to have such a great program that Karen runs, but you know, I'm just wondering if you have any concerns when I look at the numbers of high school students that are going for SAP, you know, follow-up?
I think the concern would be if the supports weren't there. I think, I know that Mr. Isselman and Mr. Dean both sit
that type of thing, and there has been talk under Andrew Fries's leadership, I believe, to drive new topics.
And we do have Karen coming in early this week to talk about vaping as well.
Yes, I was just gonna say also too, Alicia's going to be here next month to give the whole SAP update, and she has been working with the high school to increase our health curriculum, to focus on the education of students on this topic. So they start understanding how detrimental it is to their health, and so we are ramping that up. I know she's worked with Tom and our health department to get more of that into our curriculum so they get more of an education about what they're actually doing. They may think it's nothing big, and it is.
One of the things that we talked about in our Act 44 discussion was the SAP program. And you can look at sort of the numbers both ways in terms of referrals to the SAP program. I mean, you want to see high numbers, but the numbers are really high. And, you know, I'm just wondering how closely the high school administration is working with guidance in the SAP program, because, you know, it's encouraging to have such a great program that Karen runs, but, you know, I'm just wondering if you have any concerns when I look at the numbers of high school students that are going for SAP, you know, follow-up?
I think the concern would be if the supports weren't there. I think, I know that Mr. Essman and Mr. Dean both sit on that, so they're there frontline with those meetings to make sure that they're providing their perspective in addition with the counselors and what Ms. Lenard are doing. I guess if your question is, does that reflect that we've got a larger problem and we need more supports? I don't know. I think that would warrant some comparisons around the county. One of the things that did impress me when I came in was the number of cases that were referred to SAP, because I thought that that did represent a lot of support that was presented to kids. So no, I don't have a particular worry about whether those numbers are too high. I think the worry would be, are we serving those kids that are referred?
Okay, no, I mean, I think that it's great that people are using the resources. We don't have a breakdown of those overall numbers. We just see a bolus of a number. So this next question was somebody in the community who asked me, and I'm glad that Mr. Lockinger is here because he may want to weigh in on this. It's really a student rights issue, if they have student rights. But if somebody is called into the principal's office for some issue, what is their obligation to talk to you versus having, waiting until a parent arrives?
I think those conversations, we're not, we can't make anybody speak. So I think students are not willing to talk, and they want to involve a parent, that's fine. But by and large, I think students have been very cooperative and willing to talk about what's going on so that we can find out what the facts are and deal with facts appropriately.
Okay, and then just one other question, which is sort of a bit of a reversal. It has to do with the discipline process itself. So those of us who work, probably everybody in this room has always talked that we have to learn from our mistakes. In fact, many of us are encouraged in work to make mistakes because we're supposed to be learning from them, like Thomas Edison, you know, failed like 5,000 times before he was successful. So, you know, spend some time sort of going through the student handbook and looking at our approach to how we do some of these things. And I'm wondering, when we approach somebody who has legitimately made a mistake that violated policy, do, does the high school administration look at that as a potential learning experience, or are we just looking at trying to enforce discipline?
I think it's both. I think we want to make sure that the high school's safe for all the students, and I think by and large, the students are pretty aware of what is expected in behaviorally. And when students do something that is wrong and they're having trouble with their behavior, I think that's where we start to see the supports increase, especially for high-level discipline cases. And I think the SAP, goes back to SAP, if you see cases of drug, alcohol, other mental, drug, alcohol, those are the ones that tend to be the ones that rocket to the top. Those immediately come with SAP referrals and supports that go with that. Lower-level cases, if we see repeated behaviors, then we want to intervene in a way to try to stop that cycle. But really, we want to make sure that we're following our policy, make sure that students understand what that others can behave in a predictable way, and the consequences that go with that are pretty much in line with what I've seen in other places that I've worked. And then really making sure supports are in place for those who have trouble meeting those expectations. And when we can, try to be proactive about that. If we recognize that a student may have trouble meeting those expectations, and I think this is most commonly recognized where students have a behavior support plans, we're out in front of that so that we can deal with that before it becomes a behavioral consequence.
Thank you.
Tom, congratulations on your first year first of all. Second question, first question for you, and my only question is, how do you define the role of two assistant principals, and how do you separate the roles so we make sure we're using officially?
Well, currently, their, their work is divided largely by grade level. So this year, Mr. Dean had a case management for ninth and 11th grade, Mr. Essman had 10th and 12th grade. And then beyond that, they've got additional tasks. Mr. Dean was the scheduling, Mr. Essman's in charge of keystone testing. They both sit on the SAP team. So they do have defined tasks. There's not a lot of overlap in that respect, other than all of us are taking things as they come up throughout the day. Like if there's a discipline case that pops up that somebody's not available for, we're dealing with that. We're constantly trading off as we're down in the cafeteria during lunches or out in the hallways. Each of us have departments that we're assigned to supervise and to help facilitate with their questions. So those are all divided out separately.
Tom, I just had a quick question, going back to vaping with Mr. Capina's comments. Is vaping addressed right now in the health class curriculum?
It is, and as Dr. Miller mentioned, that is being revised to try to keep up with that. And it's been in there, but I think we've all realized that that's a very emerging issue, and even the science on it is not very current.
Yeah. Has there been any feedback from the teachers that that discussion has become fruitful? I know, you know, one of the reasons that my dad's generation, everybody smoked in high school, that's a generalization, but, you know, for the reason it started to peter off, I think is because there's a widespread acceptance that smoking tobacco products is not healthy. And I, you know, I wonder how long it's gonna take that to catch up with vaping?
That's a great question. I think the speed at which this has become a problem does not mirror the speed at which smoking became a cultural phenomenon. So it's hard to say, but I hope that we can rapidly, as rapidly understands the health consequences to it. So no, to answer your original question, I don't know that we have really good sense from the health teachers yet. I wasn't in part of those conversations when they were working on that in June. They started some of that discussion about how do we make this more relevant, how do we really highlight, in an accurate way, you can't just resort to scare tactics, we need to be accurate about it, but clear about what we know the health dangers. And then, you're right, we need to try to measure that, and that might be a good thing to take back to them, like how do we start to baseline some of students' attitudes toward this and respond to them there?
Thank you.
Do we still, Tom, do we still conduct the annual drug and alcohol survey? Do we still put that out, submit that?
The PACE survey is conducted. I think that's every other year, though.
Okay, so that's still...
Yeah, we just signed off on that, I think, for next year.
And then those results would be shared with the board when they're done?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think they give some indication of what students are saying in terms of their behavioral habits relative to smoking, vaping, drug use, that sort of thing.
I would hope that they're updating that to reflect some of those changes.
I'd like to ask a quick question of Dr. Phillips, because I don't see where else I could ask this question this evening, but it looks like Governor Wolf is looking to science and legislation around doing work on, schoolwork on snow days. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I wondered if you had any thoughts on that piece of legislation concerning that in high school as well?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's in here, but yes.
Because I, because I made an opening.
No, I'm just saying, I can run right through it, all right. I believe, interesting, her name is Phillips Hall, I think, or whatever, the representative that's pushing it through. It is fast-tracked right now from my understanding, it's getting passed through. There are some conditions for it. It allows up to five days, but with those, you have to have assurances of everyone having the same access if it's electronic use for not only students but staff as well. So there are a lot of things that we are going to have to start looking at as an administrative group. It looks like it's just going to be nine through 12 for the four subjects, and three, I believe it's, three through eight for the others. It's not touching specials. So I think we're gonna have to do some work trying to hash this out with, see Mrs. Kaitlyn gets back there, talking to the union as well. It's slated to start in September. So there'll be a lot of work to talk about how we're gonna hash that out. There's a lot of discussion about making sure of, making sure the students are held accountable for the time that they would be doing work. How are we going to do that? So there's gonna be a lot of technological issues that we have to work out. We do have some pods that we use, we utilize for students if they don't have internet access, they can borrow. Not quite sure we have enough of those to go around right now, so that's gonna be another question of what we do. Again, it's a lot of it, it has to do with ensuring equity. So we have to have those discussions, not only with community members, but our staff as well, to make sure that's gonna be go. But that is something that looks like it's going to be put in place, starting in September.
Tom, real quick, is that enabling legislation or is that mandating legislation? Or mandated by the state?
Well, it's not mandating, it's enabling, but I would guess at least 500 school districts are gonna look at it pretty hard because of the weather restraints we have. Again, I think we're gonna have to look at it as a team, meaning teachers, meaning parents, and meaning administration, how this is all gonna look. I mean, there's gonna have to be some accountability if we're gonna do it through our Chromebooks. There's gonna have to be accountability of students being on for a certain amount of time, staff having that ability to be on as well. If we're going to do something other than technology, how we're going to, what that's gonna look like. And again, ensuring that there's equity, there's also the special needs piece to it, and making sure we're meeting the requirements of that. It's somewhat loose in its form right now. I went through and I actually looked at the bill. It is not a mandate, it is something that would be offered, but as it's offered, it comes with a lot of conditions. So that's something we're all gonna have to look at to make sure we're comfortable with what that's gonna look like for our district.
So Dave, would that require a board asking them to whether or not we want to move forward with that?
Oh, Simpson. Oh, yeah, it's a fairly significant change in our current values.
I would think that would be a good thing. So we'll have more to talk about in July.
Sure, Campbell, thank you. Thank you, informative. We appreciate your response to the active questions. This time, we're gonna move on to item five in our agenda, which is a presentation provided by Mrs. Kaitlyn regarding to the 2019-20 final general fund budget.
Okay, this evening on the agenda, the board is adopting food service budget, capital budget, general fund budget, setting the millage, and adopting the home step farm steadily. Those are the big things. But right now, I'm just gonna give an update on the general fund budget. The education budget, I'm sure a lot of you have been seeing this the past couple days. Dr. Phillips may summarize this later, so I won't steal too much of his thunder, but in any event, basic education funding is down to 160 million versus what the governor wanted at 200 million. What that means for us is about 16,000 less in state revenue for basic education funding. I did not reflect that in my numbers, it's not significant, and it just came out today, so I really don't want to be adjusting that. They, also in the state presentation, if you look at that, their line item budget, they moved social security up into basic education. So it makes it look like there's a huge increase, but that's not the reality. They just moved, did a transfer in their presentation. Special education, 50 million, those are the numbers we had in our budget. Ready-to-learn grant remains its own line item, separate line item, same amount as the current year, and some other funding changes that were part of the education budget. No increase in the hourly minimum wage. So we had to put something on the agenda, and the recommendation was to put a, reflect a 1.5% millage increase. We talked about different scenarios over the past presentations, but what's reflected on the agenda item is 33.1107, or just under a half a million increase, which generates almost 695,000. And what is shown here is what is the impact on an average residential property assessed about 108,000, and that is our average, $53 a year, $442 per month. So to summarize, what does our revenue look like, including a tax increase of 1.5%? It would be 76, just over 76 million compared to our estimate this year, an increase of about 1%. You know, locally, we're at about 69% locally funded. Again, the largest part would be the 1.5% tax increase. State revenue, it nets out to, you know, $11,000 increase. And we've talked about what's increasing, what's decreasing. The biggest thing that decreased was our rental subsidy for our debt service. And other sources of revenue, really that reflects our extended-term financing, our capital lease financing for our Chromebooks, iPads, and IMAX. So stepping back to June 11th, we had presented some reduction strategies of about 413,000. We looked at elementary staffing, long-term subpositions, discussed four positions, not bringing them back to try and reduce some salary and benefit budget. But the discussion at June 11th was, the board wanted to keep the two long-term subs at Reifdun. Subsequent to that meeting, we realized the calculation of the Jackson Wall fourth-grade class size was not correct, we recalculated, and that long-term sub is deader for 2019-20. And we also made the decision that we were gonna move a second-grade teacher from O'Watt to the second-long-term subposition at Jackson Wall, but we decided, no, we'll keep all four long-term subs. Second-grade teacher, second-grade class will be five sections at O'Watt, so everything will stay the same. So this was not removed from the budget, the 263,000. We talked about substitute teacher per deum, we increased it significantly during the year. The 42,000 represented taking it back to what it was, but after board discussion, reduced it to an amount that's still competitive. And I'll show in the next slide what the numbers are. We also looked at non-mandated budget expenses of about 170,000, actually 20,000 of that was revenue. But where we, before we get to where we are today, this is what we were looking at. If we had reduced the budget by 413,000, we would have an expense of about 78.2 million. We looked at different scenarios of 1%, 1.5%, and staying within the mandate of 8%. Your unassigned fund accounts can't be larger than 8% of your expenditures. So where we ended up at, after the pluses and the minuses, is just a net increase of expense of 39, almost $40,000. The teacher substitute, we pulled out 14,000 approximately from salary and benefit. Contracted and purchased property services, we're going digital with the hard, with the newsletter, but making sure hard copy's available. That's printing and postage of 19,000. Staff development reduction, that has to do with, there was requests for project lead away training at the senior high school, that won't be needed. Springwater units, postseason athlete meals, student physical cost offset, these are things that we were paying for, but really aren't mandated. Pulled out 17, 17,700 from the budget. Contracted ground services, pulled out 27,000. Supplies and curriculum resources, we talked about copy paper and ink for desktop printers, which we will be removing a number of them going forward to reduce the cost of ink, 18,300. And quotes came in recently for science resources, final quotes, so what was in the budget was high by almost 57,000, so we reduced that number. So in total, we reduced our expenses by 160,000. The things we talked about last week, the 170, we were able to, almost 100,000, you know, removed. We still are gonna have discussions with the librarians to come up with a compromise so that if we do reduce it by any, it will just help to reduce the deficit. Gloralife, I had presented numbers on the contracted costs versus what we're experiencing in terms of out-of-district tuition costs and transportation. And what I added to the budget was 200,000 to really account for the decision to implement four classrooms at a cost of a million, or if that's not approved, then had to, there are some students who will be placed out, but they, the special ed supervisors had not budgeted for it. So we had to put that 200,000 back in. So we had to put that 200,000 back in. So expense-wise, where we end up at is 78,699,763, which is a 3.4% increase from the current estimate. And again, the majority of that, 1.9 million, almost 2 million, has to do to the, you know, salary and benefits contractual increases. And some new staff positions, which are primarily special education and the position related to the Act 44 grant. But that's offset by revenue, the Act 44 grant. So in summary, where we are today in reflecting a 1.5% increase, this final column, we're seeing a deficit of 2,684,195. The unassigned fund balance will be 7.2% of the expenditures, and that's obviously lower than the 8% limit. Also on the agenda will be, the board approves annually the commitments of fund balance, and this is official board action. It is for things that we will be using and going forward. You could see Peasars, the increase for reducing that commitment to, by 323,000. We do have a commitment for property assessment reductions. We are going through one large, couple are, well, one large commercial appeal, another smaller one, but every year, we continue to get residential. And then the capital improvements, keeping it at the 1.4 million. We pulled out about 500,000 from the budget to delay the weatherproofing and some others. So we will need these funds going forward for capital projects. The homestead farmstead reduction allocation, the state provided the district 1,365,000. That number's been the same for the past several years. Properties that apply for and approve, 6,837, it's up by seven from last year. And then that calculates to an assessment reduction of 6,038 in assessed value. And what, in terms of a millage of 33,1107, that's a reduction of $199.92 off the tax bill. Are there any comments or questions?
And how much, how many, what percent of the taxpayers use that fund that can be homesteaded?
Well, we have about close to 11,000, so, you know, two-thirds.
And how many tax, how many properties are there?
Parcels, I would have, you know, are approaching 11,000. Now, this is just residential. So, you know, I would venture to say, you know, 65% is a good number, approximate number. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Gage.
Doctor Hammer, in preparation for the business functions, agenda items, and talk about the budget, can we go down each one of those funds separately? Because I know we have a consent agenda.
Yeah, we get, I think we get these section, we're going to recommend that board members identify any specific areas that they would like to have pulled, where they'll be feeling that there'll be a consent, and otherwise, we'll keep them in. But I think in that particular area, Hunter, what you're saying is we'll just take areas of the specific one, or just pull out the main?
Each of the fund, but?
Each of the fund, but?
Not the whole?
Oh, could you maybe, when we get there, just identify the number? And a reminder that what we go through here is a consent agenda, which allows us to list several items for the board approval on a single vote. And any board member who would like us to remove a particular item in advance, just signal that before we start the vote process. So our first area is minutes. It's recommended the board of school directors approve the minutes of the main meetings. Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all in opposed, motion carries. Item seven, treasurer's report, Mrs. Patient.
I am the treasurer's report for May 2019. We have requests of 4,415,774.65 from the general fund, and 106,954.13 from the capital projects fund.
Any discussion?
I just had a quick question. Ann, when I reviewed the treasurer's report, I know that this covers, I believe it's the full month of May, not June. So we have another treasurer's report that will report on the final period of the year. But I think our collection for total revenue is somewhere like 94.5%, and I compare that to last year, and I think that this year is lower than it was last year. Do you have any expectation about whether or not we're going to meet the full 100% by the end of the year? Do you have any indication as to where that's going to end up? I know that's a shot in the dark, but I'm just curious.
Well, one of the larger collections coming yet to come will be Burke's EIT. But, you know, in my estimate, comparing to the final budget, you know, we are, the expectation will actually over the budget.
Okay.
So I could look at that more specifically to see if?
I just wanted a judgment call. I don't need, you don't need to look at it more specifically.
I don't, there is no big variance in any particular.
Okay.
Well, does Mr. Diamond and the tax collector from St. Lawrence, have they given me their, their, the monies?
They have. The collection rate this year was not, for both, you know, the money was 7.6%. Last year was only 7.7%, but it doesn't account for 5% percent.
And we did, we did do like to look at delinquents, that probably hand that over to?
They are turned over.
Yeah. And then, like, as they did last year, how much of that are they, did they collect of what was?
Isn't it like 300% of what we, yeah, of what we budgeted, I think. Maybe the 300% is high, but?
No, we, it's turned over to the tax collector, the county, and they do collect on, on all of them, or eventually go to sale. But they do collect, they're in the collection rate. Just looking back, Hunter, I don't, how you're looking at it, in last year, Mercunial?
It was a different one, my bad.
Mercunial taxes were up higher last year because?
Of the back days?
Yeah, so, and they count harder than they're saying, because they have to be collected, or Burke's EIT collected a lot of money.
Yes, okay.
Mrs. Patient, did you cover your payment requests as well since your motion?
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're down the treasurer's report. Board policy, Dave, we did vote on, sorry?
My bad.
Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd made board policy, it's recommended the board of directors approve the following policies. Policies one through seven in the agenda are second read policies. Eight through 13 are first read policies, which means they'll have an additional month to sit for review. And then, item 14 is a resolution of a policy. Second, any discussion?
I just wanted to say quick that I may have some questions next month about some of the ones related to, I think it was, the federal compliance issues. Patrick had sent me an email regarding it, and I just didn't get a chance to read it yet. So I just wanted to, that was a carryover from last month's, or two weeks ago.
Okay, so we'll have the month to be able to review your questions and get some of your response. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The dysfunction is Mr. Gell.
Thanks, Doctor Berger. It's recommended the board of school directors approves the following business function items, number one through 20. I'll leave it to Hunter to pull out the ones he wants. I know I have ones that I want to pull out. Wanted, uh?
I think we need a second. Sorry. Are you waiting for me? Okay.
Give her a second.
Thank you.
Okay.
So now, now, um, the food service budget.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine. Five.
Jim Brady. So do you want to do one through four, and then 11 through 20 first?
Well, do we need to address 17, because we have?
Correct. I would, I say we make the new BGO.
That's for the?
That's your problem, isn't it?
Now it's starting to help to rephrase his motion to pass, remember, one through four, and 11 through 16.
Okay, it's recommended the board of school directors approves under consent agenda, numbers one through four, and 11 through 16.
Eight through 20, correct.
And 18 through 12.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gell.
It's recommended the board of school directors approves number five, final budget for the food service department. 2019-20 school year, revenue 1,748,686, expenditures of 1,743,41, net gain of 5645.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no? Motion carries.
I think this is one of the first times we've had a?
Yes, it is.
Because I remember Mr. Brady and I were always carrying on about, you know, why not, why, why aren't they covering the costs of the food? You remember that, Mr. Brady?
The first time in 10 years voting on this, I voted for this because of the fact we're actually going to break.
Yes, a little bit over.
General Department done a really nice job of tracking the cost.
But they were always behind, and I know you and I were always wondering why that was going to be. Thank you for getting it in the lab.
Number six, final budget for the capital project fund for 2019-20 school year with revenue of $95,000, expenditures of 1,598,965.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no? Motion carries.
The following commitment balances the general fund balance for 2019-20 is follows. Public school employers' contribution rate stabilization, $755,376. Impact of assessment appeals on real estate tax revenue, 160,000. Capital improvements, 1,406,445 for grand total, 2,321,021.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question on item six versus item seven. Capital project funds versus capital approval, are they two different items?
There are two different items. The general fund, for the past several years, has supported smaller capital projects, around 600,000 a year. And the board made a commitment, it was well over, close to 3 million years ago. And as we do those smaller capital projects, we're reducing this, but because we pulled out all but 135,000 from the capital, from the general fund for capital, we're keeping that the same. I had shown a summary on June 11, of how these funds will be used over the next several years. And they are a smaller thing, including the weather provision too, with the carpeting, you know, single unit HVAC replacements. So we will be using all our capital project funds. I can pull that slide up if you'd like to.
Ann, just so I understand you correctly, we're taking the general fund number and putting it with the capital fund number, and that together is our capital projects for the year. Is that, is that fair?
No, that is a commitment of the fund balance, saying of the fund balance that we have, the total amount, over the next several years, we are going to use 1.4 million of that for smaller capital projects.
So it's not just this next year, it's all the next, is it four years?
And it goes a little bit beyond that, the smaller ones. The capital projects fund, this right now really reflects, you know, the work that they're going to do in September, November, for Jackson Wall and Lorraine, for replacing the unit ventilators. In addition to gutter work at Reifden, so those are the big projects.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no? Motion carries.
Number eight, final general fund budget for 2019-20 school year, the amount is 78,699,763, per the attached resolution. I'd like to ask for a roll call, hold on this.
Second. Any discussion? Phil, call Ann?
Uh, Mr. Arrington?
Aye.
Mrs. Patient?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Trevina?
No.
Doctor Hamer?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Doctor McFlendon?
Aye.
Mr. Gell?
No.
Mrs. Stratton?
Aye.
Seven, two, motion carries.
Number nine, the per capita tax for 2019-20 school year, per the attached resolution, I'd also like a roll call on this.
Any discussion? I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution that the percentage increase be changed from 1.5% to 1%, which would reflect a millage rate of?
Run on that.
Run on that.
Run number nine.
It's the coffee.
I have a question. Mr. Gell, could you explain why you're asking for roll calls?
Because I'm not in favor of any taxation, plain and simple. And I'm going to, I'm going to send my protest on this outrageous spending.
You realize that our family fathers did not oppose the taxes, they were opposed to taxes without protesting?
No, what they were opposed to was insane government spending, things of that nature. We're in the middle of insane government spending.
If you do not pay for your bills, you will not be able to sustain yourself.
And what, what are you worried about?
Your opposition to other things this evening were representative, in fact, you do not rest the fact we need to maintain things to make.
Oh, no, I fully grasp. I just wholly reject the fact that this board has as its basis, the concept being that this is a revenue problem, and the exact problem we have is a spending problem.
Mr. Gell, I think if we could make sure we could turn off all the lights, we could open all the windows, get fresh air in, and we can make sure all our children could be able to use chalk on boards instead of having to go and use computers, I think we'd have a great society going forward.
Mr. Gell, I think if we can make sure we can turn off all the lights, we can open all the windows, get fresh air in, and we can make sure all our children can be able to use chalk on boards instead of having to go and use computers, I think we have a great society going back to the nineteen... But frankly, I don't think it's going to happen, because the days of the twenty-year-old school hook, and the days of the fact of opening windows to get fresh air, and the fact that the matter is that, in this day and age, it costs money to operate a plant, and you're not being supported by the public, and the way we've already phrased this thing for at least the ten years I've been on the board, it's probably ten before that, we, we are not being compensated at the right level, so if you continue this discussion, what we're doing is we're basically going on and on with the same thing ad nauseam, without realizing the fact is, the positive problem is not within our community, the problem is that we have others that are not supporting, so therefore, because of that, we will play the bad guys because we can. Mr. Brady, let's, let's get back to the, to the discussion on item nine for capital tax. Is there any, are there any further comments about item nine for capital tax for nineteen twenty? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no? Motion carries, eight more.
Number ten, establishment of a real estate millage for the school year two thousand nineteen twenty at a rate of thirty-three point one one oh seven mills, or a one point five percent increase per the attached resolution, to continue the mad march of forty mills.
Delivery stays at motion, staying in the correct format, as the two of you have papers and the... Mr. Gell, would you please restate the, uh, the motion?
The establishment of the real estate millage for the school year two thousand nineteen twenty at a rate of thirty-three point one one oh seven mills, or a one point five percent increase per the attached resolution.
Any discussion?
I'd like to offer an amendment, the right time, um, to, uh, change the resolution to reflect a one percent increase with, with, which would reflect a millage rate of thirty-two point nine four seven six mills.
Could you explain the basis for your decision?
I think that, I think that a number of the things that the board tried to do, um, towards the end of this school year, is try to cut the expenses, and I think in the grand scheme of things, we weren't very successful in doing that, and because of that, I think that it's not fair for us to go back to the community and look for more money, uh, when we haven't done as much due diligence as we can, and I think there is some agreement around the table about the amount of work that we have in front of us and that we can continue to do, and I'd rather take this on the fund balance, and I think that the revenue, uh, is probably going to increase unless we have a serious economic situation, which is going to look drastically different if that were to occur anyways, and I think that the one point five percent increase is not merited in this case, and I would rather see that decrease to one percent, uh, which is what I supported last, uh, not last week, two weeks ago, um, and I think that's what we should go with.
As I stated two weeks ago, I think the mentality of the board with this was the same thing I heard last year, which was to kick it down the road, can problem, but the problem is that, right now, we still can't get ourselves to zero, and I have a problem with two point plus million dollars being drawn down for the fund balance, I'm hoping in the next year that, in similar years, we've always been able to not have as much of a negative at the end of the year, I think that Ann and her team have been very successful in the past years, being able to save money along the way, but I think when you take one of the tools out of the toolbox, and you prevent her from doing her job, and at the same time, don't realize that we're only going to be hurting ourselves in the long run, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot, I think I've used enough poignant phrases in the last two minutes to help myself to hurt myself.
Well, Jim, I, I think we agree on a lot of what you said, we just come to different outcomes, and, and there was something that Jerry said that I think was, uh, very true, which is that this is not just a revenue problem, and I don't necessarily agree that it's all our spending, but there is a serious, uh, factor here about the amount of spending that we have, and that the district doesn't have, I think, a strategic vision for how we want to spend dollars, and we don't have right now, uh, very positive results to show the community, to show them that they are getting return on the value that they're investing, and I don't think that's a smudge against anybody, I think we're up against a lot of different problems, but I think we need to have a larger look at that in this coming year, and, you know, frankly, I just wish the board would have realized that sooner when the administration came to us with some of these numbers in January, so I think that going for the one percent increase is reasonable to keep on track of what you're talking about, um, in the grand scheme of things, is it going to mean that somebody doesn't lose their home? Probably not, but on the same token, we also, at the board meeting, took action to see over two hundred thousand dollars in savings, and because of the board policy that we've already set, that was eviscerated because we made a miscalculation, and I'm not blaming anybody for that, but we haven't really shown that we're responsible enough to say, okay, we're in a pretty serious situation, we have unsustainable spending right now relative to our taxation rates, and I just don't think that we have the right to go back to the community with this large of an increase, so that's, that's just where I'm at.
Well, Hunter, what, my problem is, I think you're not going to see much change between next year and this year, and why I say that is because your healthcare is going to increase next year, your costs of your employees and their salaries is going to increase next year, utilities are going to increase next year, I think the one thing that we're doing positively right now is we're making improvements to our physical plant, we have over a million square feet of that, as Mrs. Guyish indicated, we're finally replacing the chiller that's been on life support for over ten years, replacing another, enough other units in other buildings, I think that we're trying to be fiscally responsible in the fact that we're trying to be efficient with the use of our money, the problem is that, along the way, you need to pay your bills, and I think that when you're not looking at it as where your costs go, you're in problems, I mean, if you look at any business, I don't think that Exeter Township School District is unique in the fact that their healthcare costs go up every year, I think the fact that our healthcare costs were lower as far as the increase than Mrs. Guyish originally forecast, because the consortium was able to work that through, is very good for us, but at the same time, I still don't think that we can blindly say the next year you're going to be at a zero, I don't think you're ever going to be at the zero at this point unless someone takes drastic cuts, as we mentioned previously, and until the board has that much energy behind it to do it, number one, number two, the community feels they want to do that, and number three, at the end of the day, everyone knows that there's going to be a lot of unhappy campers, you're not going to do it, so I think you have to at least make the effort, and that's why I said the one point five percent, I'm not a five percenter, and frankly, if we worked on this, we probably could have done things, but I don't think you can do high numbers, I don't think it is, I think if you look at the history of the board over the last several years, we have never had outrageous increases, we've always had increases or zero, minor increases or zero, we've never looked at ten percent increases, five percent increases, we've had a number of zeros in the last ten years, so I just, it's just my feeling that you have to try, you can't rely on others to pay your bills, and we are making investments here.
Yeah, a minute ago, you said that other people aren't kicking in, meaning the state of their things, so which one are you going with?
I do believe the state of things aren't kicking in, but I do believe we have to make an effort on our own until something happens, do we want to be the first to declare ourselves bankrupt? No, because as soon as you want to go bankrupt, you're not going to run this, you're not going to run this school district, and all the things we've offered to our students will go away, and what makes Exeter, Exeter, all of that culture will dissolve underneath your own feet.
So Jim, I, I think there's a lot that you said that I agree with, again, it's just coming to different conclusions, I mean, one of the real challenges that we have is the continual downward spiral of our millage rate increasing and making it that much unlikelier for businesses, which are one of the best ways to offset property tax bills to come into this township, I mean, if you look at Lancaster County, probably the average millage rate is under twenty mills, and they're right next to us, you know, you look at all the counties around us, and it's the same deal, you look at the school districts around us, and they have lower millage rates, we really got to tackle some of these things, and, and you know as well as I do that the five-year projection that Ann presented shows us running deficits every single year, even with three percent tax increases, we could not keep up with the deficits that we would have in those years, even if we continue to use the fund balance and raise taxes to the maximum amount, and that's just unacceptable, I know Mike has talked recently about the school district being one of the number one additions of value to your home in this community, because a lot of our communities are investing in the school districts as well as investing in their homes, and if the district were to go into receivership, or be in biofinancial standing, or our bond rating gets decreased because our fund balance is way too low, we're going to be in a nightmare situation, and I think the best solution for that is to tackle some of the spending challenges, and that's really why I think that the one percent increase is necessary, because we really have to look at this as a spending problem, not a revenue problem, I'm voting for the one percent increase because I think that we haven't done nearly enough work that we can honestly say, let's bring the unassigned fund balance down to six percent, I understand that, but on the same token, you know, we can't just continue to say, this is our revenue problem, we need more money, and I'll agree, the state needs to kick in more money, but they don't listen to Exeter Township School Board in saying that, and they don't listen to any of the other school boards in the state by saying that, so why should we expect that they're going to come in and fix that problem for us, I think we need to get serious this next year, um, like we've been getting serious these past two months, but actually have some results to show for it around the year, and I think that we can do that, I don't know if it's going to be everything that I want, and I doubt it's everything that you want, but there's no other choice that we have as far as I see it.
I would rec, I would recommend that we not work towards getting our fund balance down to six percent, for one reason, unassigned fund balance is there for the emergencies, if something critical or tragic happens, something in our system, we need to be able to act, if you don't have the money in the bank, that you're once again getting the bonds, which you're not a big fan of, so I think we are being proactive in having the resources available, and that's why I always look and say, if there's ways to make sure, we can make sure that fund balance is at eight, and there's any way we can get ourselves as close to eight as possible, because I think that's your rainy day fund, and that's the way that Ann's able to put money aside for things, and sometimes you're drawing that down to balance your budget of two point four million dollars, that's all part of that equation that builds into it.
I, I agree, and I just want to point out that this one percent increase would bring us a seven point two four percent fund balance versus what the one point five would bring, which is seven point, I think, seven and six, is that right? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Ann.
No, no, I'll just put it up on the screen.
We're going to be at seven point two with one point five.
I think it's page six.
Well, page ten, we're going to be at seven point two percent, so one point five.
Actually, if the, uh, one percent, the unassigned fund balance would be six point six percent, at the one and a half percent, it would be seven point, uh, two percent.
Where, where does that reflect it? Because I have it on page six, that'd be at seven point two four percent.
That was the slide from June eleventh.
Okay, so the new one is page ten?
The new one's page ten, uh, all eyes, and that just shows you, um, one and a half percent increase, but on this slide, I will show you all the amounts here.
I, I think, um, go, uh, this state is like forty-seventh, I think, in, in, in all the states, forty-seventh or forty-eighth, in, in, in funding public education, now Governor Wolf has, uh, presented a budget, he wants to increase, um, money stored in public education, and, um, um, you know, he's, he's trying to do his best, I think the legislators, uh, I hate to say it, the Republican-controlled legislature up in Harrisburg, uh, are very agree with their, um, dollars for public education, although they, they do do these EITC things, which are giving it to private schools, and giving it to corporations that, you know, that, um, that help fund these private schools, that EITC, millions of dollars, and then they wanted to do multiple more million, billion, millions of dollars, and, uh, Governor Wolf, uh, put, uh, stuff to that, he vetoed it, so if you want to do anything, call your legislators and tell them that they should support public education, not privatization, not religious schools, but public schools, that's what the Constitution says in Pennsylvania, that we are so, and we as, we as board members need to stand up for public education, not for private schools, not for charter schools, charter schools, in fact, we, in this district, what is it, one million dollars, over one million dollars we give to charter schools? One point two million dollars, do you ever see one penny of accountability from those charter schools? No, not one penny, and yet, every public school has to account for everything that they do, so, um, I think we need to get on the phone, call our legislators, and tell them they, we, we want them to stand up for public education, not private schools, not religious schools, especially religious schools, I myself, being a Catholic, I, 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 I would not support, uh, EITC for privatization of schools, the Constitution says, for, the Pennsylvania Constitution, that's the only thing they talked about, providing public education for the, for the, the children of, of, of the Commonwealth.
Uh, just to clarify, to clarify, slide six was from the June eleventh presentation, if we were able to remove four hundred thirteen thousand from the budget, which included those four long-term subs, and that hundred seventy thousand of other miscellaneous, then yeah, the one, yes, the one point, uh, percent would have a seven point two, or a deficit of two point four, but because the, uh, long-term sub was no longer an option, but we were able to reduce in some other areas, but had to add two hundred thousand for additional out-of-district replacements, or to implement the Laura White program, uh, it's, deficit is two point six million, two point seven million, uh, the one and a half percent, or seven point two, but if you want to know what it would look like, uh, with the one percent increase, uh, the deficit will be two point nine million, uh, or an unassigned fund balance of six point six versus the one and a half, and, and things, uh, in between, so, that's where the one percent would be, thirty-two point nine four seven six.
Well, I appreciate the correction, I maintain my position, and I'm good, I don't need to keep talking.
Okay, Hunter's, uh, proposed an amendment to, uh, the motion, and we're looking for a second, I believe. No, I believe we have a second, right into discussion. Okay, is there any, is there any additional discussion?
I'd like a roll call.
All in favor? Um, okay, all in favor of the amendment as proposed, uh, Ann, roll call. Yeah, can I say just real quick, remember, you're voting on the amendment now, not, not actually saying yes or no to the amendment, just whether you agree to amend the motion, makes sense?
So you want to reach to amend the motion to what?
To one percent. For one percent. And then you would vote on it, if it passes, then you'd vote on it.
And that would be down to one point five percent.
Mr. Arrington?
Aye.
Mrs. Peja?
No.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Japina?
No.
Dr. Hamburg?
No.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Dr. McLendon? Mr. Gell?
No, nothing less than zero would do for me.
Mrs. Stratton?
Seven, two, motion fails. So we're back to the, uh, original, um, uh, motion, and, um, we had a motion that was read, and we're looking for a second to the original.
I think it already passed.
Oh, we have a second to that? Okay. Any additional discussion to the original motion?
So when is the motion now?
It's, we're back to one, we're back to the original motion, average of one point five percent, uh, increase of millage rate of three three point one one zero seven.
Uh, Dr. Phil, too, you want to call again?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll just go in.
He doesn't have a vote. I don't have a vote, but yes, I'll, I'll say yes. Okay, I suppose I will do a roll call.
Mr. Arrington?
No.
Mrs. Peja?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Japina?
No.
Dr. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Dr. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Gell?
No.
Mrs. Stratton?
Yes.
Motion carries, five more.
I'm seventeen, I vote.
Do you have where we are?
Yes.
Following voting delegates, we just paid the PSBA delegate assembly to be held on Friday, October eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we, Hunter, I guess we need a second.
Not a motion second, a second person.
A second person.
Michelle, you want to go?
Yeah, I'm happy to go.
So, let me just say one thing, usually when folks go to these, um, and serve as delegates, they participate in the conference that precedes it, so we would expect that you would, um, apply, you know, for the conference. So we would expect that you would apply, you know, for the conference. Go through and, Hunter, and attend those two, I think, two days, possibly three days.
They have sessions on Friday.
It's a three-day conference. And the only decision you have to make is whether you're a state senator. So we have, so we'll amend the motion to include Michelle Stratton to, to attend. Okay, would that change? Did we hear a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Want to know? That raises eight, one. I think that wraps up the business function section. Thank you, Mr. Gallow. First off, committee, Mr. Trupina. Do you really want to pull anything else?
Pull out 1A, 2A, 4A. And then number 10.
So you're ready, Mr. Trupina, you want?
So we want to pull out all of number 10.
And 14.
Yeah, just as a gentleman. And 14. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratifies the following personnel items. Under retirements, A through C. I think we'll just go through by each category. Or support staff. For support staff, administrative staff and support staff items, A through, I'm sorry. Retirements, support staff, A to C. Second. Second, good. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers. Resignations. Certificated staff. I dare not ask for a new chrome book, because I voted against it, so. Resignations. So certificated staff, A through B. Support staff, A through C. And extracurricular staff, extracurricular staff, A. Maybe just a second.
Any discussion? I just want to say, good luck to Peter Clark, who was my math teacher for algebra and pre-count trigonometry. And I think it was pre-count trigonometry. I'd be pretty mad if it wasn't. I just always enjoyed his class, and I just wish him well moving on in the future.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers. Okay. Appointments. We are, our chairman of the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel. Appointments, certificated staff, A to N, and support staff, A. Any discussion?
I just want to say quick, congratulations to Katie Schmears, who is an Albrightian, and just excited to have more Albrightians in the district.
Will you be abstaining with?
No.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
So we're going to go, we're going to approve certificated substitutes and support staff substitutes.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
Now we're going to move on to change of status. Certificated staff, item A, and then support staff, A through C.
Discussion?
Regarding the certificated staff, we're now going to have a temporary professional status. Will we recognize it in the later meetings?
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a leave of absence for employee 192002.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves item number six, kinder camp, kindergarten screening, ESL screening. And you want to drop seven, eight, nine? And seven, eight, and nine.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves item number 11, salary increase of 55 cents per hour for the following examined content to secretaries effective July 1st, 2019.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves item number 12 and item number 13.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
We're back up to the top now. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items under retirement, administrative staff. Julie H. Klein, leading supervisor, retiring effective August 30, 2019.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mrs. Klein for her work at the school district. I think she's done an excellent job over the years, and just appreciate her efforts.
Yeah, I would have to agree. I've known Julie for several years, and I'd say she's highly regarded and I think we missed. She's provided leadership and expertise, and as someone who'd always depended upon, not only to fulfill the role as leading supervisor, but she's filled in when necessary in this district to prove herself to be a real, you know, loyal employee for the X district. So she's going to be greatly missed. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Symbolic, no?
Yeah.
Motion carriers.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves resignations, administrative staff. Rosemary Ham Belinsky, math standard coordinator, resigning with effective date to be determined.
Any discussion?
With regards to Mrs. Belinsky, I'd like to thank her for her time at the district and what she's done. With regards to acquiring another coordinator for that position, what is the process that we're undertaking? And how long do you think it would take us to find a bridge that could fit her shoes?
Fitting her shoes will be a tough task. We will start immediately tomorrow, but we'll see if we can get someone to fill her shoes. Be a tough fit. Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I think it was a breath of fresh air to have Rose here, and it's just a shame that she's, has to leave as soon as she is. You know, we had several people come and go in our math department, and really, I think, benefited to have her hearing of several people who are very upset that Rose is going. But obviously, she's taken on a professional position that will be very much of a challenge for her. And I congratulate her on her wonderful role, but I think it's really our loss.
Dr. Hamburger, if I may, I could just kind of say, Julie and Rose both together. You know, I remember when I started here, and the first time I sat down, I met with the two of them together, and they both looked at me and they said, you know, Patrick, you know, we're going to be your bookends. You know, whatever you need, you know, we're going to be here for you. And, you know, when you're a new assistant superintendent, and you're stepping into a role in a new district, and something as big as literacy and math, to have two people that are as knowledgeable. I believe between the two of them, there's over 60 years of experience in public education, and it's really hard to replicate that. So, you know, it's definitely been a tough summer for me, having to lose both of them. And definitely big shoes to fill in both instances. And, you know, I'm going to miss, you know, having them assailing wars and the expertise that they lack. I just wanted to publicly thank both of them.
Thank you, Patrick. Any further discussion?
I'll vote symbolically no.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carriers, say two, one.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel item. Appointments, administrative staff. Renee Maser, principal at Jacksonwald Elementary, replacing Joseph Schlafer at a salary of $97,000, with an effective date to be determined, pending receipt of the required documentation.
Any discussion?
What's the roll call?
Roll call. Any additional discussion?
Why do you want a roll call?
Any additional?
Sorry, I was being a jerk there.
Was I happy? Who is he? Stan and Jerry, right, Jerry?
Dr. McLendon?
Yes, I am going to vote yes, because I am satisfied that the interview process was followed the way it was supposed to be. The board received detailed explanation of everything that occurred at each of the three phases of the interviews.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
I would like to say that I'm going to vote no. Not because I doubt the qualifications of Ms. Maser, but due to the process and the fact that it is my duty as a school board member to listen to the community and what they feel. With that being said, I assume that the vote will go through this evening in favor of Ms. Maser. I also believe that Ms. Maser has the qualities that we are looking for in a principal. I also therefore have faith that the Jacksonville community will embrace her and give her the opportunity to do her best job of keeping in mind the Jacksonwald culture. I look forward to moving forward with an open heart and an open mind to Ms. Maser, while I also am hoping, I take that back, I demand a more clean, transparent, and improved vetting process in the future.
Well, I personally think, I was there for the discussion concerning the vetting process, and I think it was followed the way the administration has done all hirings. And I do believe that this person is the best qualified for the job. And I would be voting yes.
Well, what would you change, Michelle?
The first thing I would change is that, something that we've already agreed that we're changing, which is that from now on, we're going to move two candidates to the third round. Have we not agreed to that?
But it's always been done that.
But it wasn't this time.
Yes, it was.
No, we move the one candidate at the second round.
Wait, I don't know if you should talk about that.
Would you?
No, talk about it.
You brought it up.
No, please talk.
But we've agreed that we're going to do two from now on, and I think that that is a great idea. The other thing that I would change is checking social media. I think that a lot has come out that has looked poorly, that really is taking, been taken to an extreme. And I think that that's unfortunate for her, I really do. I saw the stuff, I don't agree with the stuff, but I also don't believe that she was aware of it. Could be wrong, but that's my belief. But I do think that is a good idea going forward, that we check teachers, principals, everyone, check all of their social media for things. Because in this case, we've been told that she wasn't aware. There could be things out there that people are aware of, that look badly, and that's not the kind of person that we want. So I think moving forward, I think it's a good idea to look at that stuff. And I think that we learned a lesson in this case.
Without getting into details about what happened, because we're not allowed to, even though some people did and put information out to the public that they weren't supposed to, the process was followed. Process was followed thoroughly, and the candidate exists.
Since you're bringing that up, Jerry, I'd like to let you know that I found out who the two final candidates were from someone that's not on this board. Honestly, I'm tired of you accusing someone on this board of leaking stuff, because I found out who someone is.
I didn't say board.
You said it in several emails to several community members.
I didn't, but I didn't just say it there.
But you have said it in the past, and I don't think that that's fair.
Sure is.
Okay, I'd like to move along to the, to the, and.
I'd like to jump in as well.
Okay.
You know, there's an old saying that don't always trust what you see, because even salt looks like sugar. And, you know, I have expressed my concerns to Dr. Phillips about the process. I did not vote for Patrick Winters when he was selected initially, because I didn't feel as if the process was followed. We do have, my concern has to do with process. I think there's far-reaching implications, and we put a process in place and we don't follow it. We had a collegial and a collaborative process that has worked. It's in fact been one of the feathers in Dr. Phillips's camp, is that he's actually put a process in place. When I look at the roster of people that have been hired under following that process, I clearly see an abundance of talent that has come into the district. And following that process has worked, which is why I find it so perplexing that we ended up in this circumstance where we are today. So I too will be voting no, because I believe that we sort of strayed from our process, and I think it's going to be very difficult to regain people's trust around this process.
I'm telling you, see why you're saying that the process was not followed? Because it was followed, and it was done the way that it's been done for the other candidates, where there was a third round.
So if you want me to, Sean, you can stop me where you'd like to, but I can get into some detail around some of the communication that occurred, if you'd like me to talk. But you're challenging me. So I would like to be able to explain to you, but I'm going to get into personnel issues. If you'd like me to do that, I'd be happy to get into that. Well, but if you're asking me, there are things that I would like to say that legally I'm not in a position to say. But if somebody wants to absolve me of any responsibility, I'd be happy to say those things. Not coming from a, not coming from.
I think the point that you're making, though, is that all of this information got out, and it also sullied the entire process.
No.
No, absolutely. No. No, people in the public knew things that they had no business knowing. That was internal stuff. It needs to be left.
You're working for us. You work for us.
Mr. Chair, can I ask for a regular order to be restored? And I call the question.
You're up there for us.
And that's your fault.
We request a call. Question, is there any further, any further discussion on the board?
It's called social media.
Well, I think when we, I just want to say this.
We, we have a call to call a question? Okay, let's move on to roll call.
Mr. Aaron?
Aye.
Mrs. Peja?
Yes, Mrs. Peja, you're perfect.
Yes. Mrs. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Trupina?
No.
Dr. Hamburger?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Dr. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratton?
Five, four, motion passes. And congratulations, Mrs. Maser. If you'd like, you're welcome to say a few things.
Yes, I would. If you're okay, I'd like to be able to look at everyone. First, I want to thank the board. Dr. Phillips, Mr. Winters, administrative staff, teachers, parents. This is a hard decision, but there's a lot of courage and a lot of bravery in here, and I really respect that. So thank you. Thank you for being real with who you are and what you represent, because all I hear, no matter what bickering is occurring, is that we believe in this district. And we just want what's best for our kids. is that we believe in this district and we just want what's best for our kids. I can never find fault with that. I'm a parent, I'm a wife, I'm a parent. I'm also a proud owner of two yappy Chihuahuas, but I like to think of them as happy. But regardless of that, there is no harder job than being a parent and there is nothing that hurts your heart more than to see your, your child suffer. I know, what do we look at when we don't understand things? When we're curious about something, the first thing we do is we Google it. And of course, in this day and age, if it's there, if it's on Google, it must be real. And then we create these stories about ourselves or we, these stories about what helps us feel comfortable with how we feel. I, you will see on social media, Renee Mosser, you're going to find Renee Mosser reading to children, you're going to see me with a little girl who is my daughter, who was thir- in third grade at the time, now she's fifteen. You're going to see me standing next to community members, giving scholarships and books to kids because I have such a passion for reading. Yes, and if you scroll down, you are going to see a fitness competition, a fitness competition. Because I have a healthy living style and I have goals. What do you see when you look at that picture? I'm going to ask you a really tough question. Would you have those same concerns if I was a male? Would you have those same concerns if I was running through the finish line of a marathon in a sports bar in a pair of shorts? Would you have those same concerns if I was covered in mud running through obstacle courses? Or standing next to my bike after riding five hundred miles for cancer? Because I've done all of those things too. And when I look at that picture, I see a strong woman and we need more of them. And I see someone who's disciplined, I see someone who is dedicated, I see someone who will not give up on a challenge and will take risks. And here's my risk, I'm standing in front of all of you. I can't change your heart, that's not my job. But what I can offer you, and thank you for what you said, I really do respect that. I can form relationships with you so then you can see my heart. I care about kids. Change is hard and with change, there's fear. And when we are fearful, we react. I do not hold any one of you accountable for anything that you said. I see that all as a way for you to protect what you care about and I respect that because I care about kids too. And when I walk into the school as your new principal at Jackson Walls, I'm going to walk in there going, would I, am I the principal I want my kids to have? And when I sit in that classroom, do I want my own children learning from this teacher? And if I can't answer yes to that, then I have a lot of work to do. I love what I do, it is who I am. I'm disciplined, I'm dedicated, I'm committed to what I do and I'm not afraid of risks. I don't have a speech. This is who I am and I want to be there for you. I know what's comfortable. Just comfortable, just get, stay with what you know, but we don't grow when we just stay with what we know. I spent twenty-four years in the Allentown School District, that's comfortable. But I don't want to be comfortable anymore. I want to grow, I want to learn and I want to do it with you. So I understand where we are, I understand it's a late night. I will be in the lobby for a little bit. If anything, just shake my hand and introduce yourself to me. If that's all you can do right now, I'm okay with that. But I'm going to work for you, I am going to work for you and when I'm sitting there a year later, I know and I'm confident I will be the best candidate for you. So, thank you.
So, uh, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So, um, those of us who are elected officials are comfortable with being uncomfortable because that's, we're in those positions all the time? So what are the first three, three things you're going to do when you get into that school?
Three things, off the top of my head. I am going to walk around, I'm going to listen, I'm going to build relationships and I'm going to learn all that I can. And I'm just going to really watch because when I asked a question at the interview, what is one word that best describes Jackson Wall? I heard the word family. And when your family changes, it's like a death, right? You go through some mourning, whether good, bad, or indifferent. And it's hard, so I'm going to work to be a part of that family. Will be my number one goal as soon as I step foot in that building.
So, and, and I know you've probably heard that people have some concerns about you living outside the community. So, you know, when it snows, you gotta be, um, you know, when it snows during the day, you can't go home. Um, I mean, those are just some of the, the expectations that people would have as a building leader. Sounds to me like you would certainly, um, you know, be committed to doing all of those things. But you, you know, I mean, realistically, you've stood up in front of this group and I appreciate the passion with which you address the group, but the bar is just going to be a little higher for you coming onboard, which I know that you certainly understand that.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're, you are probably going to say, did she go home yet? That's going to be your question. Call her and see if she's home. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're back to personnel items.
Yes.
I think we have number four.
Yeah, I'm trying to, we have to, I'm trying to...
Sorry, Jim.
Hang on a sec. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approves, item number ten, special education extended school year program additions updates. Any discussion?
Just wondering why some of these didn't come to us prior to the...
Dr. McClendon?
These are people that, we had people resign and people kind of back out, so we had to find other people to come in. And then also too, the, um, two paraprofessionals for the extra hours, it says up from fifty and up from ninety-five. We have students that need support and tips and we thought we could get contractors and we could not find contractors, so these two employees said they would cover the tips hours as well.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that these Board of School Directors approve, approves extracurricular additions for both of them. For both of them.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, Dr. Hamburger, um, Mike and I, uh, both met, um, with the committee that places the extracurricular and athletic, uh, positions on the schedule and the collective bargaining agreement. Um, I acted in the official capacity and Mike acted as an observer. Um, I'm sure that he has opinions on each of the four positions or all of them together, but I will be voting no for all four of these positions. Um, I believe that in our current climate, um, financially, that we can't be afford, we can't afford to continually add new clubs. Many of these already cover, uh, some of the programs and services that are already offered to students. Um, while I do not quibble that any of them would add value to our programs, I just don't see how this is fair for us to continue to add positions like this and talk about cutting L T S positions as well as other attrition methods that we're going to be exercising. Um, so I would be voting no and I encourage my colleagues to do the same.
When I look at our system here as we have it, I might not be in favor of all four of these positions, but when they're lumped together, I'm kind of put it to the position of voting for all four together.
You can separate them.
I could do that, but then, it is what it is. I, what I would like to say is, when you're looking at senior high school art club, when you're looking at reading Olympics, I think we're looking at, we're looking at the TSA. We're trying to, once again, encourage our students, we're giving them ability to succeed by adding a second full-time, full technology student association advisor. I think with the success the program's had over the years, I think they've probably looked at this to see if they need that to be able to give more depth to the programs and students and to assist them more. So, I can't necessarily be opposed to this item because I think it's only giving more to the students and allowing them to succeed.
Can someone explain why the positions were added or?
I think... So... And, and Dr. Phillips, jump in here if, if I'm struggling at all. Um, the varsity assistant cheerleading coach position, uh, this was born out of a comparison to other athletic, uh, groups, um, such as...
There is an attachment, just in the board, when it started.
There's an attachment that you can look at. Basically, basically, the committee felt, um, that for each of these positions, they had merit and where they're placed on the schedule, um, which is reflected in the category number and also the rate of pay, um, that's where they belong. For varsity cheerleading, I believe, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a third paid position. Um, the assessment showed that it would be comparable to similar sports or activities of the amount of, uh, what's the word? Participation, um, as football, soccer, um, softball, baseball. Um, there was a comparison that a similar sport, um, like this, uh, I think it was, if I remember correctly, volleyball. Only has, was, was that right, Mike? Volleyball only had two positions? So it's, it's comparable. Um, part of the concern that the committee had was that with the amount of concussions that occur um, in cheerleading versus other sports and activities, um, they would have good reason to have a third person there. Um, to clarify it, one of the reasons that I don't agree with that assessment is because it's not like that person would be in their, uh, groups when they're doing their jumps and different exercises throughout practices, would be another person on the sidelines and they already have two paid positions. So that, that's where I'm at. The senior high art club advisor, I believe this is a new club that would be paid. Um, it's a club that's currently functioning. I think they have, um, more than a dozen students that participate on a, a somewhat regular to regular basis. Um, I believe, and Tom might be able to help me out, I think that they meet monthly.
I don't know the frequency that they do meet regularly. They've got a number of projects that they've been working on that have been operating for over a year.
Yeah, so they meet regularly, they have a number of projects and I think a lot of those projects hinge around some of, uh, the artistic work that's being done on some of the buildings, um, such as murals, paintings. I think one was mentioned in reverse in Dr. Phillips's office. Um, junior high school reading Olympics advisor, um, the librarian at the, uh, maybe I shouldn't say that. There is a desire to have a paid position for the reading Olympics because currently what's being done by the current position um, of librarian at the junior high school, um, takes a lot of effort, um, and it is beyond what her regular responsibilities are. Uh, so some of the desire here is to make that into an advisory level position to continue, um, putting a lot of work into that. Uh, they have been pretty successful. Um, I think that they have, um, I don't know, this is probably still here. Do you know how many participants they have? I saw, I'm, I'm pointing you out because I know you're a junior high teacher.
Um, they had two teams, because some come from Michigan, maybe an L, four deep?
Okay.
I think three is correct because I think they placed, when they went to the conference. Yes.
Yeah. And then the senior high's second, uh, full technology student association advisor, um, is to augment, uh, Mr. Laura, who's currently the primary advisor for TSA. Um, there's a lot more activities being added that are STEM related. Um, and the feeling was that by having the current person who's doing it on a volunteer basis, um, to help the TSA team prepare for some of the STEM competitions, that, uh, how do I want to say this? That, that he would be better able to dedicate himself, um, to assisting with that. Uh, some of the concern was is that if that position wouldn't be, um, created, it was unknown how long he would want to continue volunteering. Um, you know, my response to that was is that they're already as a STEM club, um, and they do do activities. Uh, and it's, you know, in my assessment, it's really for the advisor to choose whether or not they continue to have as many students as want to come in, if they want to limit the teams, which I hope that they don't do, but I just, you know, ultimately I feel that in terms of trying to reduce expenditures adding new programs is not the way to go. And I think that most of these programs are already covered, so that's, that's my position. Um, if, if I didn't reflect any of them accurately, anybody in the room who was there, you know, correct me or jump in here.
Uh, I just would like to clarify, the cheerleading coach is actually just the second, um, assistant coach for our cheerleaders. That was mostly a safety issue. Um, I could be wrong on this, but I believe we had more concussions in cheerleading last year than we did in volleyball. Cheerleading is sort of, if you've ever seen our cheerleaders who are awesome, they, uh, are, uh, P I double A actually recognizes it as a sport now. Um, and, but this is just the second coach, not the... Is that, is that correct? I see our cheerleading coach in the back. Was I correct?
This would be the, um, second coach for the varsity level as we have two teams, varsity and JV for both fall and winter season. Um, for our winter season, we also have, uh, we couple, not only do we couple our competition team with our regular season, um, which cheers at home basketball and wrestling matches, um, which is, is technically considered another job. So we're doing three different, we have three different jobs specifically for the winter season. Um, our numbers for fall season are, are, are highest. Um, you see a lot of kids down on the track on, on Friday nights. It's more than just, um, it's more than just being out on the track, it's leadership, there's a lot that, that goes into it. Um, my main concern is, um, having enough people there to staff and make sure that we are doing our best as their mentors, their advocates at the sport that they enjoy, um, and making sure that they are staying safe and that we have enough people, um, throughout both seasons.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you very much.
So, motion and then the motion to have each piece vote on separately, please.
Second.
And we can also note that, Hunter, there were a number of items that the committee did not advance as well.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to vote on to, whether to, um, amend the motion to vote on separately. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we'll vote on these separately.
The School Board Directors looking for a, a motion to approve extracurricular additions to varsity assistant cheerleading coach, category nine, the collective bargaining agreement at a rate of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Is that two nos? Three nos? Motion carries, six-three.
Board of School Directors approves extracurricular additions for the senior high school art club advisory in category eleven of the collective bargaining agreement at a rate of one thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Six-three again? Three?
Three, yes. Six-three, motion carries.
Can I ask for a roll call vote? On that motion?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Hunter Aaron?
No.
Mrs. Keja?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Trupina?
Yes.
Dr. Hamburger?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Dr. McClendon?
Yes.
Mr. Gella?
No.
Mrs. Stratton?
Yes.
Seven-two.
The sport of, the, the Board of School Directors approves extracurricular additions for the junior high reading Olympics... high reading Olympics advisor at category 11 of the collective bargaining agreement at the rate of $1,210.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Two?
Two. Motion carries seven, two.
The board of school directors approves extracurricular additions, senior high school, second full technology student association advisor at category 11 of the collective bargaining agreement at the rate of $1,210.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two opposed? Motion carries seven, two. I think that wraps up personnel. Mr. Japina, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stratten.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following student functions items, one through eleven.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I think that's it for student functions. That was quick. Athletic committee, Mr. Aronson.
Yeah, just to update everybody on the board, I think it was addressed somewhat at the last meeting, but we had an athletics committee meeting where we changed the recommendation for the senior high, just the senior high, extracurricular fee to move from eighty dollars to a hundred as in, as a source of revenue to offset the costs associated with running some of the programs that we do and also increasing the physical fees from ten dollars to twenty dollars.
Excuse me, this should be a motion.
Okay. I motion that the board of school direct... Are you going to consent, Judge?
You recommend?
I recommend what it says. Items one, two? Yes. Okay. There was a second. Any discussion?
I have a question that I should come in there the answer to. When we say that we're increasing the fee to a hundred dollars, is that in the E dollars? So, for both of them, is that per activity or is that just a hundred for the, the school used to work for, it was per, so it was just curious. Thank you.
The more you do, the more you get. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nice. Okay, move on to committee reports. Quick to the committee, Dr. McLendon.
There's no report, our meeting was canceled in June. Do you have anything to add?
No, we're going to meet July 16th prior to the voting.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. Facilities committee, Mr. Brady.
Next, facilities committee meeting will be July 15th, Monday. Specifically, we'll be meeting at the junior high school, we'll be discussing the item The Eagle's Nest that's being brought forth by the ECEF.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Personnel committee, Mr. Japina.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy committee, Dr. Hamburger.
No reports, I'm just pleased to say that we're making our way through the financial policies, making good progress.
Student functions committee, Mrs. Stratten.
No.
Technology committee, Mrs. Peja.
Yeah.
Special committee, the education foundation, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, I'm pleased to report a lot of money that the ECEF is bringing in to the school district. I'm going to start with our mini grants that teachers apply for, and we were able to provide $3,703.05 of projects funded for the Exter Township School District for teachers. Did we get a list of these or should I read them on? Like...
I can provide a list for everybody.
Okay.
I mean, that's not a problem.
Would you rather read a list or would you like me to read it out loud? Read it, okay. We will be giving Wendy Redmond and Jackson Wald to the library STEM and STEAM integration kits, Gretchen Hess at the junior high, seventh grade science, three breakout EDU kits, which are like a space room type materials, Kevin Adams at the junior high for his audio and video production club will be receiving a GoPro Hero 7 video camera for the What's Cool About Manufacturing production. Sierra Kalaman, Rachel Maida, Susan Nunez Moreno, and Robin Schaefer at the junior high will be getting items for a coffee cart project that is, are for the Bridges students and they will use them as a learning and teaching tool. Kathy Walker, K through four gifted support, will get two Vido Education redo 2.0 core sets. Derek DiNazio at Lorraine, fourth grade, is getting a courtyard greenhouse. Devon Terowitz at Lorraine, the librarian, will receive a breakout EDU classroom bundle. Kat Omeyer at Watt Creek in third grade, applied for a little free library and double-sided book chuck cart, and Thomas Craver at this senior high, tech ed and math, will get Raspberry Pi accessories for software and for his engineering course. Also, we are getting EITC dollars for our district, yes, $11,937.36, and we will be purchasing STEM classroom interactive whiteboards for Mr. Rug at the senior high school, which is an interactive short throw projector for G18 Epson CX85WI. And then micro computing and coding for the junior high and senior high school, which includes Raspberry Pi kits asked for by Mr. Potter at the senior high school. And then we will be spending Lorraine and Dr. Haller funds to begin the NASA e-mission experience for Lorraine fourth grade classrooms. Finally, for May Days, we brought in $6,000, was given to the district to support $1,000 per building, and the ERCCP has also donated $500 toward the sound system at the senior high. And that is a total of all four donations of $22,148.41 from ECEF. I'm thinking that, I think we should.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll work on it. And I could just add to that, too, that with the May Days money, one of the things that was great was that we had like eighteen or nineteen teachers that applied for mini grants this year, which was wonderful. You know, there was a set amount of money the ECEF had budgeted to fund teacher mini grants, but they want to make sure that they're continuing to really encourage teachers to apply for mini grants annually, and so the mini grants that weren't covered through the initial ECEF budgeted amount, all of our building principals, you know, said, you know, I'll take a portion of my May Days money and I'll fund those remaining grants. So, you know, the rest of the mini grants that teachers applied for are also getting funded as a result of that May Days money. So, you know, you combine those three things together, it's been, it's been a wonderful year in terms of money that the foundation is putting towards our kids and the education of our students. It's phenomenal. Amy does a great job.
Yeah, I don't think we say it often enough, just how things have gone so well, having a dedicated director in Amy Lutz, I think she's done a phenomenal job, and I think, you know, we owe her a great debt, we owe her a great debt for the continued work that she does, and as well as the committee, you know, dedicated folks who have put in several hours of the volunteer time, so kudos to all of them. Also, just an announcement, that they, there is a, I don't know if you mentioned about the golf alley that is in, if you could just make a few things about that in August. But it's great, it would be great if some other board members would like to participate on it, who plays, who golfs out there, it's a great event.
Yes, I think it's on the second, it's the Friday.
That's correct.
Yes, Friday, and they're still taking foursomes for golf and...
Anybody want ball drops?
No. I have some, too.
Don't take Allison's, take mine.
I played last year, Dr. Hamburger played last year, it's a lot of fun, it's a great event, it really is. A lot of our administrators go and help out, Dr. Phillips goes and helps with registration. We've had administrators that have sat at polls and, you know, done the, you know, the hole where you can win a car, and we've had administrators come and have lunch, and so it's a, it's just a great event, it really is.
It's fun. Thank you for that report. So, we're at BCT Seeds Winter Operating Committee, Dr. McLendon.
So, just a few program updates. The graphic imaging technology program was changed for the upcoming school year from a full-time to a part-time that was based on a declining enrollment in program. So, they do look at the, they look at the programs to look at the enrollment, they try to increase enrollment or, you know, if not, they have to adjust it. So, horticulture program is on probationary status, they're watching that for enrollment. Precision machine technology was on probation, it's on continued probation, and the medical health professional, that was, I talked about that before, that was increased from a half day to a full day, so that, that's a program where there's more of a need. The graphic imaging technology program also had a name change to printing production technology. And then an update on the house, it's nearly finished, they're expecting to have that finished early, beginning of school year. We toured that at our meeting, which was held on May 22nd. It's a really wonderful, you've been in it?
Well, a couple of pictures that Mr. Campbell showed, I was there, one of our students. It's an amazing house, they're using all the top quality materials. It was a, it was a sight to see the kids really getting involved and doing all the work. The teachers are not doing much, they're obviously facilitating the work, but it's the students that are the ones that are hands-on doing the work. It's full brick on the outside, they're not cutting corners anywhere, it's rocks stacked from ceiling or from floor to ceiling, fireplace, coriander, I mean, it's all top notch stuff.
Well, on the inside is from the lower level, ground level up to second floor, it's like a brick wall.
Yeah, yeah.
And they think that some bridge donated, too, so I'm not sure if we announced it.
I think they auctioned it off right of its own.
Well, and also, Dr. Krabs, I don't, I don't know what the decision was, but he said they made look at getting a realtor to do it this time, but as normally they do auction it all, so I don't know if that was as a thought or a decision to do it that way, so...
There are plots for another sixteen houses that he built around there.
Right, and so they have plans for the construction, will start at the beginning of the, well, actually, they're going to start doing something over the summer, but when the students return, they're going to start on the new house for in 2019, 2020. They take three years, I believe it is, so that the students, the students, you know, like the first year students, they get, all get circulated into work in their, do the work in their program. So, look for that.
Uh, Dr. Phillips, do they do anything with green, they can do green paint?
Uh, green house.
I think it's brown.
I know it's a...
I mean, it's like solar lighting, solar lighting, things like that.
I mean, I believe they're trying to use the updated, they're trying to do the, they have LED lighting, they're doing things like that.
For solar panel?
Uh, no, solar panel, they're not going to get in, yeah, they're not doing really that.
They don't teach the...
It's the projects that are being taught in the classrooms right now, but they do make attempts to obviously make sure the envelope in the house is tight so it wouldn't save on energy, and they do do LED lighting.
They do have...
And the full brick certainly insulates the house better than, so they do what they can. They do do the horticulture piece, the landscapes out front, they try to do plants that will conserve on the water. Thank you. Next, Dr. Aronson.
We actually meet tomorrow, our next meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
DCIU board of directors met on June 20th. The what happened at the DCIU board meeting is in your board packet, so I won't go through all the details because it's primarily business as usual. The meeting did start off, though, with a presentation of the search program, which is a program designed for special needs students at the later adolescent level in preparation for real-world careers, and they profiled several of these students who were placed, I think several of them at Penn State St. Cho's, if I'm not mistaken, that there were several students there in food services and maintenance and some clerical, and it was really great to see that, you know, Penn State St. Cho's stepped up and, you know, accommodated these kids, and I think they had a great experience, and several of them were profiled and talked about their experience, which was wonderful. Also, the IU is sponsoring Camp Connect in 2009. This is a recruitment camp for children ages six to 16 who have experienced death in their family, and I'm going to provide this flyer to Dr. Phillips to make this available, you know, as anywhere you can, but it's, it's free, it's, it's Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty to noon, and it's helping kids who are pre-learn how to identify, express their emotions, and develop their skills to cope with their loss, so if you pass that one, a great, a great program and service offered by DCIU. That's all for my report. Legislative, Mr. Gelof.
Well, with the development of the last few days, I've got a feeling Dr. Phillips is going to have a lot to say and a lot, anything that I would say might be difficult to do anyway, so I'm just going to let him say it.
Okay, thank you. Township burlees, Mr. Japina.
I have nothing to report, but I'll defer to Hunter if he has anything that he'd like to say.
I don't really have anything I want to talk about. I can make things up if you're all in. You have nothing to say. I didn't mean to make...
We're a little low on time, so I think that's enough time to have no report. Superintendent's report, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. A quick update, Mrs. Walker shared with me, the PA contest coordinators sent posters on to the national competitions, and our students placed third. The poster float time has won third place in the American Statistical Association's National Data Visualization Poster Competition in the grades K through six category. Congratulations to Xander Bokas and Maxwell Lloyd. The students' names and pictures of the winning posters will be featured in the August issue of Amstat News and on the ASA website. To talk about the PA education budget, this was certainly not what was promised when, I think I spoke to the board early on in the process, the governor had talked about a lot of money going to education, both sides of the aisle talked about supporting it, and that quickly, as we got closer to July, drifted. To highlight some of the areas, number one, the Ready to Learn Block Grant is level funded at $268 million. That was supposed to be moved into basic education funding, where the formula would provide more money, that was not done. The basic education funding, there was a $160 million increase, but there were 200 million requested. I think Ann mentioned, to make the BEF look better, they rolled the social security line item into the amounts, but that really didn't give us anything more than what actually existed. I will not go through the formulas, and once again, it did not do anything for the districts. On one side, special education funding, we got the $50 million that was requested, so at least they stood up on that piece. The CTE funding was requested for adult N as well as STEM, 10 million, it was only given 7 million. Pre-K counts, they asked for 40 million, they only got 25 million, so there was a loss there. Head start, 10 million requested, 5 million was given, so again, the governor had asked for quite a bit of money to go to pre-K counts and head start, that was not funded to the level that he had asked. Mr. Japina had mentioned about the five-day tribute for these snow days. That again has some questions in it, but as a district, we're going to look to be ready if they do offer that. But again, I think part of the questions I have are the, it's not a mandate, but it's, there's conditions to it if we decide to do it, so we have, we need to be clear on that. I know Dr. Hackman at DIU does a really good job of trying to boil all that down for us, and then as the superintendent group, we'll probably hear more of that. We've asked her to go down, and Dan Richards, who's also working with her a lot with curriculum, but he's done some work down in Harrisburg to find out the specifics on what these five days are to look like, so I'm sure I'll have more to talk to about the board with that.
So, would that have implications on the calendar?
It would. I mean, as far as the calendar goes, rather than taking days away, those days we take away around Thanksgiving and so forth, we would choose to use one of those days as a snow day. Again, meeting all those requirements for all the teachers and all the students, it would be considered a day of class, so it would be funded by the state. I think that's, that's some of the questions that we have, and we've asked as a superintendent group, how is the state going to look at that? group, how is the state gonna look at this? Because the average daily membership would be affected as well in the funding that they give us. So, if we do use these days and we don't meet, you know, all the qualifications, will that be held against us, for lack of a better term? So, there's some things that need to be still fleshed out about it, but again, it's another option that we all have, that I think would help not only, you know, reduce taking those days away, but also the continuation of identification. We've talked about, you know, the use of our Chromebooks and having that, but again, we have to look at home, do you have service at home? How are we gonna, you know, the equity piece that's in that bill, how are we gonna assure that? If we are going to do something, you know, and again, you see Mrs. Kluzowitz is back in the room? How are we gonna handle the idea of, the special teachers are not gonna have anything to do with this, and it's only gonna be the content teachers? So, you know, the equity piece there, and how that's gonna be handled. So, there's still some questions I think we need to share with our, our unions as well. I know Ross Fivewares, the president of the support staff union, how will that be seen as a day for them, as far as support staff goes? So, you know, there's still some things we need to look at, but I think a good conversation with principals to get their feel about how they, how they think this is gonna work, sitting down with the, the both unions, the teachers, and the support staff, but I think also the parent questions. You know, if you're both going to work, that kid's gonna be home going to school, yeah, how is that gonna, so there's, there's a lot of questions to that, I think there's still some unfettered answers. All right? Just a quick recap on June sixth, as Mr. Campbell said, it was, it was our sixty-fourth commencement exercise, two hundred and ninety-nine graduates walked across the stage, last day of school for our students was June seventh, our teaching staff had their last in-service day on June tenth, which was mentioned, variety of sessions were offered. This summer, we have sent home reading lists for our students, we want the students to engage in reading over the summer, and there's some challenges and some prizes for that. We've engaged in many flex activities for our students since, or excuse me, for our teachers since June tenth, such as curriculum writing trainings, professional development of many types. Leadership week is scheduled for the administration staff on Tuesday through Thursday, July ninth, tenth, and eleventh. There will be a team-building escape room activity, as well as a book study, safety care training, as well as legal, mental health, and drug alcohol presentation, which includes the vaping. Many more activities will be taking place to prepare for the upcoming school year, as well as teacher activities throughout the summer. New teacher induction will take place August fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, opening day for staff is August twenty-first. And one final note, and I, I think it bears actual highlight, Peyton Halsey was selected as the Berks County Female Athlete of the Year, and she's the first ever student, female student from Exeter to receive that award. First ever? Oh, athlete, although I would have thought maybe, yeah. Well, then she's actually the first ever student. This is my report, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Just want to mention that following this meeting, we'll be having an executive session for personnel matters. At this time, are there any board members who would like to be heard, either their parents? And then you, Mr. Japina.
I just have two things. I just want to thank the board for supporting the proposed resolution that we would be passing, I guess at a later point, because this is drafting the resolution, to change the emergency drill law at the state level, I think that, that can be something that might actually end up being pretty productive. The other thing that I just want to say quick, you know, our new fiscal year is gonna start in, I guess it would be six days. We have from July first to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty to really get a handle on what the future of the district is gonna look like long-term, and, you know, I feel like we all appreciate that we're, we're looking at some ugly numbers, and, and some of that's gonna solve itself. I just hope that this coming year, the board is really gonna invest itself in trying to take a deep dive with that, and I hope that the administration recognizes that the board wants that, and I hope that the board still wants that, because that was the conversation that we had for the last couple of months. And I just hope that we're, we're very sincere and energetic in that process, in building buy-in, and, and making sure that the community understands why we're taking these moves, because I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I just hope that we don't miss the opportunity to start doing it immediately. That's all I have to say.
Two, and one I do want to congratulate the district on the graduation ceremony, I thought it was exceedingly well-run, and, you know, congratulations to everybody who worked on it, I think Lisa McCoy and Mr. Keyler were involved this year, but also Tom and everybody, I just thought it was very well-run and enjoyable. I did have one question, there's a meeting on Thursday morning at ten AM, the transportation pre-proposal meeting in the PD room, what is, what is that?
It's a mandatory meeting for those contractors that are interested in providing an RFP. It's time for them to ask questions, and be, be part of the case of, we will take minutes of the meeting.
And the public attend, or do you have to be a member?
No, the public can attend.
It's in the PD room?
Yes.
Will you be providing a summary back to the public on how many companies come forth to mandatory these?
We'll have that all reflected in the minutes.
That's a, on the agenda, I can put on this on that website.
Become an addendum to the RFP.
Any of the board comments? We have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.